We're going to do our flag salute and I wanted to ask, since he will now be our interim counsel for a bit, I would like to ask Kevin Jetter if you would lead us in a flag salute.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Okay. We have a number of journey memories today and. Eric Lupe was one of our longtime custodians who joined LACC D and the East LA College family in August of 2010. Eric will always be remembered for his infectious laugh, his bright smile, humor, hard work ethic. He leaves behind his daughter, three nephews, two nieces, two great nephews, one great aunt, an aunt cousin and his ex-wife. I was a longtime adjunct biology professor at the East LA College. Finally, Jack Fujimoto was one of our former presidents at West LA College and he also served at LA Mission College. Jack joined the LACC CCD family in 1969 when he was selected as a dean of Los Angeles Pierce College. In 1977, he became the first president of Sacramento City College, making him the first Asian American to become president of a mainland US community college. In 1979, Jack accepted the position as president of West LA College. In 1986, stating following enrollment numbers, Chancellor, then Chancellor Leslie Kotai recommended to the Board of Trustees that the district, that they make a change. But due to intense lobbying efforts by the Asian American community, he was retained as an assistant to the chancellor by the board and Jack served in that position until 1996. From 2002 to 2003, he was interim superintendent of Imperial Valley College. And after his retirement from LACC D, he and his wife spent many years traveling to parts, other parts of the country. They're very proud to say that they visited all 50 states. So he is, his family remembers him as a loving husband dad, Gampy. And his life was guided by compassion, gratitude and humility. So we extend our deepest condolences to these three individuals who have had a tremendous role in their lives. To embrace and to understand that this is a part of life. But first and foremost is always safety. We have to understand that there was things that we learned and we experienced that were different that required us to understand and it's going to challenge us to understand our facilities in different ways, our organizational patterns, the way we interact with each other. And frankly, as we all confront probably one of the biggest concerns of the year and that of enrollment, to understand what the future of this education institution is going to be. You know, there's no more business as usual. What the future of the way we provide service is going to look like will be a work in progress. Sometimes people like to use the term that we're building the plane as we're flying it. And in many cases, that was true last year. The hope is it doesn't crash. And I think all of you and everyone in this room, making the commitment to ensure that we stay steady and be cooperative, I think has gone a long way. It says something about this, the people that are here. It's a people-driven institution. And it requires all of us to collaborate and work together. And so I'm really proud to have been helping guide that process. Sometimes being the board president is less about you and more about everyone else. Because it is a reflection of the voice of the collective here. But you also tend to be the point of where things come through. And so, and what I've found and what I've learned is that this is an outstanding institution that has so much more potential. There's so much more to do and we only achieve success when we do together. So I look forward to the transition at the board level. And we've now established a very proud transition amongst us. I've been looking to my left because we have our past two presidents of the board and and the sentiment that every single member of this Board of Trustees is a substantial leader comes very clear in our opportunity to be the lead voice of the board. But it's a very seasoned board and it's a board that has lots of desire to express our values, the values of of working people, the values of opportunity for everyone across the district. So with that, I want to thank you all for your help. Thank you all for your guidance. Thank you all for your wisdom and your patience and in this past year with chairing the board. And I now look forward to handing the gavel over to the subsequent leadership here on the board. So with that, let me take a moment to open nominations for president of the Board of Trustees. And if you don't mind, I actually would like to nominate our current vice president, Dr. Bueno.
I accept. I accept.
Wonderful. Okay. A second's not required here. It's nomination process. But are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I will close nominations. And we will ask our clerk to move forward with the roll call vote, please.
Trustee Martinez advisory vote.
Yes.
Trustee Bueno.
Yes.
Trustee Fong.
Yes.
Trustee Henderson.
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman. Trustee Moreno.
Yes.
Trustee Vela.
Yes.
Trustee Veras.
Yes. Congratulations. So I didn't actually get a chance to bang this all year because we were on Zoom. But, but this is, this is the symbolic passing of the leadership over to you. You're welcome to bang it if you wish.
Thank you very much. We will, we're going to have some words and some pictures shortly. But we're going to run through the final nominations, then we're going to take a short little break. So I declare nominations open for the position of first vice president of the board. May I take nominations? Trustee Vedas.
I'd like to nominate David Vela to be vice president.
Trustee Vela, do you accept?
I accept.
Are there any other nominations? None noted. Lupe, roll call.
Student trustee Martinez advisory vote.
Yes.
Student trustee advisory vote.
Yes.
Trustee Bueno.
Yes.
Trustee Fong.
Yes.
Trustee Henderson.
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman. Trustee Moreno.
Yes.
Trustee Vela.
Yes.
Trustee Veras.
Yes.
One more time, student trustee Martinez. Absent.
Yes.
Thank you.
Trustee Vela. So now we'd like to enter into a motion regarding the second vice president. The motion interim counsel Jetter, is there specific language for this motion or? Okay, so we'd like a second for the second, for the position of second question. Okay, second. Are there any nominations for, or the nominations are open for the position of second vice president? Are there any nominations? Oh wait, oh, let's do a vote. Interim, interim council is looking over here. We'd have a roll call with regard to the motion of, with regard to this position.
Student trustee Martinez advisory vote.
Yes.
Trustee Bueno.
Yes.
Trustee Fong.
Yes.
Trustee Henderson.
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman.
Yes.
Trustee Moreno.
Yes.
Trustee Vela.
Yes.
Trustee Veras.
Yes.
I now entertain a motion to open up nominations for the position of second vice president of the board. Nominations?
I nominate trustee Michelle Henderson as second vice president of the board.
Second? Oh, no second required, but trustee Hoffman wanted to put it for the record. Vala Lupe, are there any other nominations? None seen. Vala Lupe, roll call.
Student trustee Martinez advisory vote.
Yes.
Trustee Bueno.
Yes.
Trustee Fong.
Yes.
Trustee Henderson.
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman.
Yes.
Trustee Moreno.
Yes.
Trustee Vela.
Yes.
Trustee Veras.
Yes.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Dr. Bueno.
Before, before we move on, I want to, we're going to make some statements right now, but I wanted to thank trustee Vedas for the smooth transition of this entire process. It's very important. Chancellor.
Thank you, Dr. Bueno. Muchas felicidades. Congratulations. Mr. Vedas, on the occasion of marking one year of service as the board and many years of service and leadership, the board has saw fit to commend your service, your leadership, your heart, your compassion, your grace, your professionalism with the token of our collective appreciation. I'd like to present that to you on behalf of the board. Ladies and gentlemen, let's thank Stephen Vedas for his leadership and service at LACC D.
I do want to make some remarks. The upcoming year is, is going to be, I mean, not, not only did President Hoffman, because here today during my tenure, we've had President Kamala Gadhav, President Fong who's here. President Hoffman transitioned into COVID and President Vedas was completely under COVID. So as we transition, the upcoming year is going to be unique. So I just wanted to make some, some remarks that I thought might be helpful. But before I get started, I want to acknowledge Oifilad who's not here. She's working. She head of development for the Salvation Army. So she's a few blocks over. My daughter Gabriela Maria is here. Gabriela, raise your, raise your hand. Hema Olivia, Hema, right here. And Paulina Pilar, right here. So Gabriela just graduated from UC Riverside. Hema is at UC San Diego and Paulina is at UC Santa Barbara. All attended LA Community College schools. I also want to acknowledge my, my mother was not here, but my father Enrique Bueno, who's 89 years old. I think it's important to acknowledge as we communicate from one generation to another, when my father arrived here in the late 50s from Sonora in Mexico, he remembers that literally as Mexicans, we were not allowed in certain places or speaking Spanish was not allowed in certain parts of Los Angeles. And part of our discussion today is going to be about that component of diversity. I'd also like to acknowledge all of our families that are part of our entire, every single custodian, construction worker, cafeteria worker, faculty member, administrator and their families, your families for working through the pandemic and allowing those family members, allowing you the physical and mental space to be part of our LACC D family. We know that there's been a lot of pain. Quick shout out to my colleagues at Cal State Northridge in the Chicano and Chicano Studies Department. During the day, I'm a family law attorney at the law offices of Omar Gaslim and at my own law firm, the Bueno Law Firm. I just want to acknowledge them for their patience. The challenge of coming back in person has been significant, but a shout out to our district IT team that was able to put together a hybrid component that is thus far working perfectly, even if some of us forgot our own passwords over time. Lupe and Crystal and the entire administrative team for figuring out again how to do this. And as we move forward, we understand that it's going to evolve. But we are also recording these conversations because in the future, folks are going to want to know what we did and why we did what we did. We know this first meeting might be a bit clumsy and clunky. We know that. If it is, it's because of us, me in particular, and, and not our staff. That's important to acknowledge. As we finish 2021 and get into 2022, there are challenges, unknown factors and opportunities to design the future for generations. Our ultimate goal is to protect from challenges, hedge the unknown and guide us toward opportunities. Our challenges are the continued pandemic and the continued unknown and the continued unknown variables that COVID-19 has affected. We have lost many loved ones during the past two years, many of whom would likely still be with us but for COVID. Generations before have done their duty to prepare and protect future generations. We are that generation that they protected. Generations before us made decisions that might have been difficult but necessary for us today. My colleagues as presidents have made tough decisions and we are surviving because of those decisions. The upcoming year will include a continued focus on safety for students, staff, faculty and the public. The country is evolving as the great resignation is occurring and as individuals and families are reexamining life priorities and their own individual and family legacies. Our nation is contemplating its future and some have noted that we are at a crossroads. At minimum, our obligation at LACC D is to do our part in continuously making our LACC D better and try, and by extension, fulfilling the promise to get our greater Los Angeles region together and unified continuously. At LACC D into 2022, we will develop and improve understanding of what the new societal changes mean for enrollment, curriculum and facilities and how to evolve in real time to meet immediately evolving trends and new realities. In the last few years, we have become better at food pantries and basic needs for our students. The coming year will have a focus on real time, that I mentioned, real time enrollment management, continued student basic needs and strategically and materially increasing our approach and timelines to student and workforce housing. An important guiding principle for the upcoming year, as we deal with some of those issues, could be summarized in the term compassion or sympathetic concern for others. This includes making sure our processes district-wide consider at its core the effect on our communities and maximize our interactions with students, with students' community and our own staff and faculty. With lots going on in Washington DC in our local community, it is the responsibility of the Board of Trustees to offer leadership. However, during the year, every person in our district will be called upon to be a leader as we have been called in the last few years. Along with compassion, diversity and appreciation of communities as they wish to be identified, called and spoken will be considered, not just as we evolve our curriculum and hiring, but in our overall LACC D approach toward our region's diverse languages, foods and cultures. Yes, that means growth in Black Studies, Asian American Pacific Islander Studies, Native American Studies, Central American Studies and my home discipline in Chicano and Chicano Studies. To that end, the following are a few ways that many in our community articulate compassion. While I undoubtedly will mispronounce terms, I apologize in advance. To the coming board, in the coming board meetings, we will attempt to identify and recognize each of the cultures in our, in our region along with the different races and ethnicities that make up our great LACC D. There are hundreds and we will do our best. As a Chicano and native Spanish speaker, compassion is pronounced compasión. In Armenians, it's karat stank. In Hebrew, it's rahamim. In Arabic, it's tautuf. In Korean, Korean is dangjauism. In Mandarin, it's daun ching. In Farsi, it's dosusi. In Russian, it's trastarinke. In Tagalog, it's bakin rame. In Vietnamese, it's tanghai. In Japanese, is omayari. To that end, let's quit going, we have work. At the end of this meeting, we're going to play a short little video by one of the iconic ranchera music, Vicente Fernandez, who just passed away. I think it's important as we look at diversity and what it means to our, to our region as the second largest Mexican city in the world, first largest Mexican-American city. I think understanding what diversity, what language, what culture means and taking every single meeting to identify different culture, different ethnicity and that appreciation. To that end, I want to thank everyone for making an effort to meeting here online and those of us, those of you who are, who are watching us via Zoom. Thank you and let's get on with our meeting. Thank you very much, everyone. We're going to do, we're going to take about a two, three member break. We're going to take first a picture as a board. This is the first pandemic that as.
Two corrections, Mr. President. All the others are correct and in order that we'd like for you to consider them.
Thank you very much. Before I go on, I do want to recognize trustee Moreno. Trustee Moreno, you're on the phone?
Yes, I'm here.
Trustee Moreno was not in the, in the picture with us and trustee Moreno, maybe at some point you'll be able to join us. But I did want to acknowledge just for the public that we did have one trustee who is not present physically, but will be missed within those pictures and maybe we will Photoshop you in trustee Moreno. But maybe, maybe the rules of the board won't allow that. So I just want to acknowledge trustee Moreno. Did you want to say something, trustee?
I've taken it a lot of times. Thank you very much, though.
Okay, thank you very much. So may I have a motion to approve the, the agenda and order of business as amended?
So move. So move.
Trustee Fong, um, uh, the first, is there a second?
Second.
Second, trustee Henderson, uh, roll call, Walupen?
Student trustee Martinez advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Fong?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Veres?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, approved. Um, may I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the November 3rd, 2021, and November 7th, November 17th, 2021, uh, meeting? Trustee, um, moved by trustee, uh, Vetis?
Second.
Second by trustee Henderson, uh, roll call?
Student trustee Martinez advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Fong?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Veres?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I would like now, I would like, I would now like to turn over the floor to the chancellor, to chancellor Rodriguez for the next special presentation.
Thank you, President Bueno. We, this is the, the date of celebrations and of commemoration and, uh, the recognition of a lot of work and good faith, uh, that went into our next presentation. And this is the ceremonial signing, if you will, and dedication and support for the agreement between LACC D and SEIU 99. So I'd like to call up Manny Ranquel and Kristan Ozan, uh, representing SEIU and any other members of the team, and also call up, uh, Dr. Mercedes Gutierrez and Dr. Mary Gallagher, who served as our lead negotiator. They have a few comments, uh, to make on the screen, and we've signed this, but we would like to take a moment. Uh, we have six employee groups at LACC D. Uh, we celebrate each of them for their unique and important contributions to the life uh, and to the educational enterprise known as LACC D throughout our district, and nine colleges. So we had the occasion to reach agreement on working conditions and salary. We're, it's something that we indeed celebrate. So long, hard, long, hard hours, but, uh, good faith, uh, negotiations that has now culminated in, uh, this, uh, moment. So, uh, Kristan, uh, welcome, please.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees, Chancellor. My name is Kristan Ozan, and I represent SEIU Local 99. Um, I want to first thank, um, um, our former board president, Steve Behrs, for your leadership as board president. And I want to also say congratulations to our new board president, Buena, and our vice president, um, Bella and Henderson. Thank you, and we look forward to working with you. Um, I'm glad that in this highly volatile financial climate, the district and our union agreed on a win-win for our members. I want to thank the board in advance for approving our contract. I want to thank the district for negotiating a favorable con- contract. And I also want to, uh, thank our chief negotiator Manny Regal and our bargaining team for all their hard work and for the support of our members. Um, I want to wish everyone, um, a wonderful and safe holiday. Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members, chancellor, cabinet, uh, students, um, faculty, staff, um, stakeholders. My name is Manny Ranquel. I'm the internal organizing director for SEIU Local 99. Um, it's, it's never easy to negotiate a successor agreement. Um, it wasn't easy for our team who wanted to keep fighting, uh, for more of what our members deserve. Um, I just want to start off by, um, giving them, um, uh, props for, um, fighting every day. Um, so for talking to, um, board members, um, up here at the board meetings, uh, for wearing purple every Wednesday to show solidarity, um, and to show how important these issues are to us. Um, I'm sure that it wasn't easy for the district's team either. Um, but after negotiating for over a year, uh, we reached an agreement that gets us through 2023. Um, we negotiated a contract and agreement during a pandemic. Uh, very few people in the world can say that they were part of a bargaining team that did that. Um, and us, together with district, we were able to do that. Um, we look forward to our continued partnership to fight for our shared interest, uh, for the betterment of our students, staff, and all of our stakeholders.
Members of the board, we are very grateful and appreciative of your efforts in supporting us in reaching a labor agreement with our partners Local 99, who are very critical to the infrastructure of the community college district. Though without them, we would not have some of the services that we have. And so we recognize the, the mission that they took in terms of fighting for their fair wages and having consensus. And, and so we are finally here because we were able to reach that middle ground. And the person that was very critical in that process on the side of management, uh, was Dr. Mary Gallagher, who I'd like to introduce so that she can recognize the team uh, as part of the management, uh, component of our bargaining.
Thank you, Dr. Gutierrez. Um, I want to recognize the management team that worked with Local 99 to come to this agreement. President Awon from LA Southwest College, Vice President Armstrong from East LA College, Vice President Barajas from West LA College, and Dean Annie Reed from the ESC. I also want to thank Manny Ranquel and his team for their professionalism throughout the entire negotiating period. There were times where we disagreed, but we kept coming to the table and we didn't give up. Even when we came to the very end and it was getting very challenging for us, we kept the communication open. I thank him for his leadership, and I thank the rest of the team for their professionalism.
President, that concludes the presentations. We want to thank SEIU 99, members of our LACC D team, uh, for this, uh, beautiful and auspicious occasion, and thank you very much for your remarks.
Mr. President, if we can, uh, I know, um, every once in a while I've had a chance to work with Lester Garcia a few times, so I wanted to acknowledge he's here. I don't get a chance to see him at our board meetings too often, but he comes, I'm sure, on behalf of Max Arias and, and the whole executive team over at SEIU 99, so. Welcome. Thank you very much. Um, thank you again, Chancellor, and, and, and thank you to the representatives of, of Local 99 and, uh, and our management. I think it's very important for the public to see, um, both, both sides, um, standing together and making comments together and acknowledging, um, it, it, it's just important to the entire community and our region, uh, to see that. And I wanted to acknowledge that. Um, moving on to, not moving on, but now to, do any members of the resource table wish to be recognized at this time to make, uh, any comments, um, before the board? Okay. Yes? Ms. Alonso? Um, if you could please come up to the, uh, to the, to the, to the microphone, and, um, because you do have a camera that, that, that's on you, and just announce your name as well. Thank you.
Okay. Um, good afternoon, Board of Trustees, Chancellor, colleagues, and guests. Uh, my name is Hazel Alonso, and I am honored to serve as the president of AFT 1521A Staff Guild. Uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. Um, I am here to reiterate in person to this body, um, the Classified Staff Guild's strong loyalty and dedication to their jobs. And while we are in talks with our current negotiations, I hope that such loyalty and love for their craft is taken into serious consideration as we progress in this process. Uh, we look forward for continued cooperation and conversation with the district and aim to conclude with a contract that is both fair and rewarding to all parties involved. Um, and lastly, I would like to also say that we, the Classified Staff, strive for parity in all avenues and in positions. And as such, um, Classified Staff members have voiced strong opinions regarding the current recommendation for the appointment of Vice Chancellor of Human Resources. We do urge a consideration of the current salary recommendation to reflect, um, appropriate compensation for position and their responsibilities attached to the role. Um, with that, again, thank you again for this opportunity to speak today.
Thank you very much. Um, if, if anyone else, just please come up to the, up to, up to the mic and, um,
Good afternoon, board members, uh, Manny Ranquel with SEIU Local 99. Um, just want to, um, let you know that in the next few months, um, we're going to be providing a greater focus on, um, on making sure that the colleges provide a clean, sanitary, and safe working environment and learning environment for our students and staff, um, especially as LACC D increases the number of students that attend in person. Um, LACC D is in desperate need for more permanent maintenance staff. Um, in September 2021, uh, we had 16 less full-time custodians than we had in September of 2020. Um, as LACC D increases the number of students that attend in person, uh, we need to increase our staff to provide an environment that students and staff deserve. Um, uh, we're currently in dialogue about staffing with the district, and we hope that this dialogue translates to increased staffing, uh, to clean at an appropriate staffing level. Um, also want to take the opportunity to congratulate the new board leadership, uh, Dr. Bueno, um, Mr. Vela, um, Ms. Henderson, congratulations. Uh, we look forward, um, with you and seeing the amazing things that, um, this board continues to do. Um, also, um, I wanted to come up here and share that, um, I've recently been promoted to internal organizing director, and, uh, as part of the reason why you see my colleague, um, our political director, Lester Garcia, here. Um, so I'll be working, um, with SEIU Local 99, but at a different capacity. So, um, just wanted to, uh, make sure to, to let you guys know. And, um, of course, um, with all of you board members, we, um, look forward to working with all of you to, um, improve, um, the, uh, education of the community colleges as well as the working conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I've worked with Mr. Garcia for almost two decades. Welcome again. Um, Walupen, I, I know we have others who are present, but just those who are on Zoom know that we're managing our online and in-person. Walupen, is there anyone from the resource table?
Yes, sir. We have, um, hands raised in Zoom.
Monday?
Mary Jo. We have, um, hand raised in Zoom, and I'm going to call out their names now. So Mary Jo.
Is this from the resource table?
Yes, it is.
Okay, okay. Okay. Please move forward.
Hi, good afternoon, I'm on Zoom.
Hello.
Hi, so my name is, uh, Mary Jo Pico, and I'm very happy to be serving in the role of acting president of our Teamsters, representing our district deans. I've worked in our district for over 20 years and been a dean in our district for just over 10. And first, I just want to congratulate Dr. Matt Jordan in his new role, and I'm really humbled to be stepping into acting president for my vice president role. I also want to extend my congratulations to SEIU Local 99 on approval and signing of their CBA today. And lastly, I'd just like to share, um, that last month, we had our fall all membership meeting. During that meeting, we included a panel of our members throughout the district speaking about remote work and remote work pilots. Our members shared their personal benefits as well as operational benefits and challenges. And there was a common understanding that we are really aren't returning to normal, but instead a new normal, kind of exemplified in our, uh, hybrid board meeting format today. So we are eager to hear about the findings from the sites that are participating in the pilots and what the next steps and opportunities for telecommuting might be. Uh, thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Next is, um, Dr. Itreviri, Angela?
Okay. President Chavere?
Hello, good afternoon, everybody. Um, yes, Angela Chavere, president of the District Academic Senate. First of all, it's great to see most of the board members back in person, uh, at the ESC and to hear trustee Moreno on Zoom. Uh, congratulations to the new board president, Gabriel Bueno, and to the vice presidents, David Vela and Michelle Henderson. I want to wish everyone a wonderful and safe holiday season and a happy new year. I also want to thank the faculty, administrators, staff, and students, um, for their hard work, adaptability, and resilience during what has been a very tough year during a global pandemic. Many in our communities have been sick personally and/or have lost friends, colleagues, and family members to this pandemic. Others, um, have lost jobs, housing, healthcare, and access to childcare. So as the new year approaches and we settle into a new normal, and I hope that we see the light at the end of the tunnel regarding this pandemic, um, it's important to acknowledge that there's still a lot of uncertainty and a lot of challenges ahead. I'm excited about many things. I'm excited about the ethics studies requirement, about the faculty hiring that are going to happen in the next year. But I think it's very important for us to reflect on where the future is leading us as community college educators. And when I joined the ranks of a full-time faculty over 20 years ago, I did so because I strongly believed in the central mission of our colleges and of the community college system. We are a system that serves all individuals in our, in our diverse communities. And not only traditional college students who plan to transfer to a four-year university, but also those who, who are interested in job training, as well as those who need foundational skills, and those interested in lifelong learning. And I think that's what has made us a shining example of how, um, public education can work to the benefit of all. It's what really has helped drive our state, um, and, and made it a leader, not only in, in the nation, but worldwide. So because of this, um, I'm, I'm very concerned about how our mission seems to be shifting in recent years. Uh, and one of, you know, one of the things that I want to mention is the November memo and recent communications from the state chancellor's office that seem to signal the end of our ability, uh, to offer pre-transfer level coursework in math and English. Um, the fact that this is happening during, uh, in the middle of a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic, which has impacted and disrupted learning, um, is extremely unfortunate and, and simply incomprehensible to me. I urge the board and the district administration to push back on some of these pressures. The fact that we only are talking about throughput and we are ignoring declines in success rates, growing equity gaps, and the fact that thousands of students have been disenfranchised due to existing inequities that are exacerbated by this pandemic is, is very disheartening. And our large declines in enrollment reflect this disenfranchisement. Students are just not coming to college. And I think the fundamental question that we need to ask ourselves is, are we here to serve everyone or only a fraction of our communities? And I really think that we have to have a, a, a real reflection on this because the future of our colleges depends on it. So again, um, I want to leave on a positive note. I'm, I'm very excited about this new year, about the end of the pandemic, but I think we need to ask ourselves that question. Is our mission changing, or do we continue to serve all students? And do we address and try to be a part of a solution to address some of these inequities that the pandemic has exacerbated? So thank you, and again, congratulations to the new officers, and we look forward to continuing working with you in 2022.
Thank you. Ms. Waddell? Joanne, you have your hand up?
I need more practice with mute and un-mute. Thank you for the patience. Uh, board president Bueno. First board president Vela, second board vice president Henderson, trustees, and chancellor. For the record, I'm Joanne Waddell, president of the Los Angeles College Faculty Guild, AFT Local 1521, representing over 5,000 full-time and adjunct faculty at our nine colleges, one center, and the ESC. First, to the new officers, congratulations on your election to board governance positions. As John F. Kennedy quoted, "To those whom much is given, much is expected. More to today than ever. The challenges before us are monumental and will require nothing less than the best from each of us." As Vice President Kamala Harris is known to say, "Now is not the time to throw our hands up in the air, now is the time to roll up our sleeves and get to work." So it's troubling that for all our talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion, we don't seem to be willing to talk the talk or walk the walk. Given the opportunity to do so, we find instead that we're mumbling and stumbling. You have an opportunity today to right an injustice by returning Agenda Item CC to its authors for revision worthy of our processes. In spite of the addition of COLA at the beginning of the meeting, the proposal is still not just. The Faculty Guild urges you to do so as one of your first actions in this new term. Further, you have the opportunity to direct staffing by need, not staffing by SERP. I found out just before this meeting of yet another example of how staffing of yet another example of how staffing by SERP is denying faculty contractually agreed-to promises now eight months in arrears. You have the authority to direct a staffing plan that will allow you to keep the promises you've made, and the Faculty Guild urges you to do so. Thank you for your time this afternoon. And on the eve of accreditation, the Faculty Guild looks forward to working with you in the coming year. Stay safe, stay well, test often, and happy holidays to all.
Thank you very much. Before we go on to the next person on Zoom, is there anyone else here in person from the resource table, not the president at this point? We'll get to the presidents. All right. Lupe, who's the person? Sorry, everyone, I have bad vision, so I just see the one who RED, and I know Joanne by heart, so that's why I knew Joanne. So who's the person who has their hand up?
Claudia, Claudia Center. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, everyone, this is Claudia Center. I am with Disability Rights Education and Defense Fund, and I am one of the signature.
I do apologize. This is the resource table, and we're going to have public comment shortly. I thought you were part of the resource table, so you will have an opportunity to speak during public comment. Okay?
Okay.
All right, thanks. That's next. So all you got to do is just hang out for a bit, and we'll get there. Anyone else from the Zoom, from the resource table online? No?
No, so no more hands, please.
Is there anything from the presidents? I know at Southwest, we have a student union opening up. We have a lot of things going on. Is there any comments that any of the presidents would like to make within, you know? We're not looking for long dissertations, but anything that's interesting in 10, or 20, or 30 seconds? Come on up. Pierce College is represented today, all right? I feel like a talk show host, but welcome, come on up.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to announce that Pierce College has selected Dr. Matt Jordan as their new Vice President of Academic Affairs, and he will be joining our team on January 17. I know that most of you have seen him at the resource table. We are thrilled. He was there today, visiting with our students. He's visiting with everyone even before he started, so.
All right. Thank you very much. Mary, I know you want to tell us about something that's occurring at LA City College. If I'm wrong, that's okay. And not that I call on people.
I do, thank you, Dr. Bueno. I am really excited to let the board know that we have had an agreement with UCLA Sesme, the Clean Energy Smart Manufacturing Innovation Institute, since just before the pandemic. But we had not been able to start any programs with them. But we will be starting our first bootcamps with them in January. So I'm really excited about that. So I just want to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other president that would love to volunteer first? Lupe, I thought you became a president, sorry. All right, let's move on. So request to address the Board of Trustees regarding regular agenda items. I'm going to read a statement that we use it so much that it's in plastic. Yes. Oh, Jim Limbaugh. Jim, you're with us.
Yes, sir, I'm with you remotely, so thank you.
West is best, but East says that they're the beast.
No, actually, West is best and East is least, but we'll leave it at that.
Oh, my goodness, where is?
Oh. And so the gauntlet is thrown.
It is, it is, okay. And I asked for it.
Yes, sir, you actually did.
All right.
I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize the contributions of Sivlia Barajas as our Vice President for Administrative Services. Toby is leaving the end of this month for a well-deserved retirement. I simply wanted to publicly thank her as she has elevated the role of Vice President at West to one of compassion, one of transparency, and one of full trust. Will be missed, so on behalf of everybody at West, wanted to recognize her for the contribution. Thank you for the opportunity to do.
Thank you, thank you very much. Is there anything from Harbor, Trade, or Mission that's going on with the culinary programs that we should be of interest? There's got to be something that's happening of interest. Literally, I'm a foodie, so if we have a food program at LACC D, you're going to get picked on.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dr. Luis O'La, interim president of LA Harbor College. Tomorrow, we have a partnership with Norque Gonzalez. They're going to be providing 1,000 gifts to our community. And our culinary arts program is going to provide baked goods. We're also partnering, and we're doing our food insecurity program. So we'll be giving away toys, we'll be giving away food, and we'll also be providing some delicious meals and delicious baked goods from our culinary arts program.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. I have a question for Mission College. So does the culinary program still at Mission College have your breakfast special available for students right now? Because I know when I was up there, it was like $1.99. I just want to make sure that in terms of providing basic services or culinary programs, are offering very inexpensive opportunities for our students. So tell me about it.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, members of the board, and congratulations, President Bueno. So to top that, we've actually, we are giving away food vouchers to our students to use at our cafes. It's no longer called a serveri. It's our Mission Cafe and Grill. So our students are getting, are receiving $200 vouchers for the semester, so it's free to them. And I also want to take this opportunity to mark your calendars because on May 20, Trade, and Harbor, and Mission will be competing for the cup, right? Harbor has it now, and we plan to take it to Mission. So join us.
So thanks. I do have a question. President Armadas, I have a question. So if students want to know, because we do need to use these meetings as opportunities to move resources. So if you're a student in Mission College, what do you need to do in order to get your food voucher?
Yes, so through our financial aid website or if a student attends one of our Eagles for early enrollment events, they can apply in person or on the website. It's the same application that they complete for our Student Store voucher, which is a $300 voucher. So they can come away with $300 for the Student Store, $200 for the, for our cafe.
All right, excellent. So if you're listening, you know, you know what to do now in order to get additional resources. I just want to make sure and take advantage of these meetings to communicate with the folks out there, and hopefully, they're texting everyone.
Thank you for that.
Okay, no worries. I just want, I don't want to leave out Trade Tech. We'll get to Southwest in Friday's event. But I just don't want to leave Trade Tech out and the opportunity to highlight stuff that's going on in their culinary program, if there is, I hope there is.
Yes, always wonderful things going on with our culinary program, including we held a competition a few weeks ago, spectacular on campus. I do want to take this opportunity, since I have the mic though, to highlight our Design and Media Arts Program, who pulled off a fabulous first in the Culinary Building last Friday with the Gold Thimble Fashion Show. A number attended, including the chancellor. Also, thank you trustees Henderson and Fong, who also came out and enjoyed the performance. So it was spectacular, and it was, while I'm not talking as much about the culinary program right now, the Culinary Building was transformed. So once again, that building continues to serve as well. Thank you all, and congratulations.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
If you're a student at Trade Tech, and is the culinary program open right now for students to eat, or is it not open right now?
Yes, so we've been open the entire semester. This week, because it's finals week, and we have to have our students focused. But our culinary program operates our cafeteria as well. So we have been open all semester. There's the occasional days where we've had to close because of program needs. But otherwise, we are totally open. Culinary operates the cafeteria as well as the restaurant, the garden restaurant, we love the garden room. I'd love to see you there, Monday through Thursdays, from 11 until 1:30.
Thank you very much, greatly appreciate it. And part of the reasons, Board President, that I ask about the culinary, I remember when I was a student at Cal State Northridge, Don Ricardo's at the Northridge Mall had a 99-cent special. It was beans, rice, huevos con chorizo for 99 cents. Then you had the second, it was huevos rancheros, beans and rice, again, 99 cents. But during difficult times, 99 cents was able to get you through. You know, so if we can inform students of some of these specials, literally, so they can get fed, and maybe our foundations can even subsidize some of those so that they eat and eat for free. That's always promoted. So not that I'm ignoring Valley College. Valley College always has access to the mic. And Southwest College is going to have a presentation on Friday that I will be there, and hopefully, the entire board will be there as well. So, Madam President?
Wonderful, thank you so much, board, and good afternoon. Just a few announcements on behalf of Southwest. So the first is, I'm really excited to announce that we were raised $5,000 this year to adopt families for our student parents. And we'll be donating $25 Amazon gift cards to every child in their household. So we'll be serving 200 students, student parents and their children this holiday season. So that was really exciting. And then we have been working very diligently with the help of Valley College to open up a Family Resource Center at our campus. We actually met with our donors, Lynette O'Connor, yesterday, and they were so impressed by our progress that they gave us another $25,000 donation, which is very exciting. So we're very happy with their continued support and are hoping to open up the physical location by the end of January. We are having our Student Union groundbreaking ceremony on Friday, this Friday, December 17, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. We're very excited to host you, so looking forward to having you at Southwest. And finally, I just also wanted to acknowledge Vice President Dan Hall, who is also retiring. He's our Admin Services Vice President. He has served Southwest very diligently for the last five years and is leaving on a high note. We could balance our budget this year. We're very proud of all the work we've done. He's guided our college through all of this fiscal recovery and all of the ongoing construction that we have. So we just want to wish him well as he retires on December 31st.
Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to checking out the water, those water stations that we invested to make sure students, as they were saying, that they needed additional water or hydration centers. Not that we're highlighting that, but I'm looking forward to seeing that on Friday.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Is there any other president that would like to make any additional comment? I think the only one was Valley College, but you know, we're not putting any pressure. Oh, come on up. Oh.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Dr. Miguel Dueñas, Vice President of Student Services at East San Diego College. Here just to share a little bit about the work that we've been doing at ELAC in regards to just really connecting with our students. I think one of the big factors is doing enrollment first in person for us has been given opportunity for our community to know that we're there, that we're their president in person, along with our faculty and staff, helping us out by doing telephones, the call challenge, connecting with students directly to get input and feedback from students. It has been very helpful in addressing the student needs that we have, but also at the same time, sharing with the community that we care, that we care for them and provide them input and information on needs, trying to make a contact to get back into ELAC and back to their educational program. So some of the work that we're doing there, we're really proud of that work with our faculty, staff, and students that are helping us out. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also want to acknowledge some of the work you're doing with dual enrollment. You know, East had its Alumni Association. I was able to attend, and Mr. Dueñas was able to give me that feedback. I want to acknowledge that, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. With dual enrollment, would you wish every little bit on it?
No, 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 that's okay. That's okay. Valley College has been waiting until the end.
I was just looking for the final word.
All right.
Congratulations, Board President, to Bueno. And I was also a little distracted thinking about the amazing culinary programs and the food. And I'm looking at Trade and Harbor for the next, for the culinary book, hopefully before. We, like everybody, we've been spending a lot of time and energy on enrollment management, making sure that we figure out how to reconnect those students that have put a hold on the college experience, reconnecting them, as well as making sure their continuing students are retained. I could go through a ton of different efforts related to that. But two new things that I can just mention briefly. Today, we just received word from the Studio City Farmer's Market that we received a $5,000 check from them for our Helping Hands Project, which helps students with basic needs. Class, it's okay. There's a lot of different efforts across the district on basic needs, and I know that everybody is has new and exciting things that are happening daily to serve our students, making sure our students' basic needs are met. This is just a nice one to mention for today. The second thing that I'll briefly mention is tomorrow, 4 o'clock, we have a nursing penning ceremony. If you all have never seen a nursing penning ceremony, I would just encourage you to attend. It is an amazing ceremony, steeped in rich tradition, and it's just a very moving experience. So I'm looking forward to that tomorrow. It's always terrific to acknowledge any graduation ceremony, and the nursing penning one is one that has a lot of special. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much, greatly appreciate it. All right. We will now, unless there's any other, Wadup, any other hands? Okay. I think we're managing the hybrid a little better than I imagined as I'm trying to pay attention. All right, request to address the board. Are there any persons signed up to address the Board of Trustees regarding regular agenda items? But before we get to that, I will read a statement that I must. All right, Mr. Jenner? All right, all right. Board, oh, that's me. The First Amendment and the Brown Act guarantee a member of the public the right to criticize a public employee in the performance of his or her duties. However, speakers are encouraged to focus their com, their comments on issues relevant to the conduct of the public's business rather than on private or unrelated matters. And I do want to add to that, that this public comment component is related to agenda items. Then at the end of the board, at the end of the board, you can talk about any item that's not on the agenda that's related to LA, to LACC CD. So, Lupe, do we have, uh, how many?
We have two speakers, um.
And I believe two are in person, right?
Yes, and these are the only two that we have. They're in person. The other two are not.
I, I couldn't hear you.
Well, we have two speakers in person and that's it. We could ask for raise hands after these two speakers because they signed up.
Okay. Are they here, are they here personally?
Yes, they are. They're here. First one is Wanda Powell, in three minutes.
Yeah. Uh, so as you come up, if you could please identify yourself, because members of the public, there's a camera for Zoom, and we want to be able to capture as much as possible.
First of all, let me say, uh, I love your energy and the leadership that you're showing. Uh, would you please pass on, in the African tradition, I would honor your father, uh, because his dream came true.
Thank you very much. Very kind.
So please pass that on. So now I'll start. Human Resources Plan, this is the issue that I'm talking about. The, and this follows up through really quickly. Uh, the major thing is that we've had several vacancies in administration and across the entire district. You've assigned interim, uh, Vice Presidents and Presidents in the, uh, situation. Some of them, for example, at Mission, uh, basically, or at Pierce, and also, uh, at Harvard. And we are at this point in juncture, uh, really concerned because the Cox Dream, the founder of our college and the community that surrounds it, we are experiencing a dream deferred. And we need vetting. And I went through that 59-page agenda that you're dealing with today, and I don't envy you. The major thing that I'm concerned about in terms of that Human Resource Plan, we are, our Dean of Student Services has been, is being who? Have our VP, as just announced, Dr. Wanda, uh, Mr. Hall is retiring. And so there is a deficit of leadership that needs to be vetted. The reason I know you understand it, because MCC One, for the Vice President of Human Resources, uh, Chancellor, not only allowed her to work for two years in terms of human resources, and then he took, before he made the recommendation, that's vetting. And that's the kind of vetting that we need to have. We've asked for certain questions on how we're leading and how our dream is going to deal with from Dr. Juan and our Chancellor. I am now going to ask the new Presidents and Vice Presidents, you can't answer because you can't answer in two minutes. But the major thing in terms of dealing with is what is the plan for Southwest in the future? We lack the leadership that we need to move forward and keep our dream alive. It's so, so important. I know that you know that vetting process. I was impressed by your selection. I will talk mostly to many of you because there are three of you that are running, uh, MVP election in November. So the question I want for the Board, what is your plan for Southwest that will keep our dream, our plans alive? Thank you.
Uh, ma'am, could you state your name for the record?
Wanda Powell, and for Dr. Marino, I got 43 years on you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Next person?
I'm Sharon Collins Head.
If you could state your name for the record, ma'am?
Good afternoon, and I'm Sharon Collins Head, uh, just retired from Los Angeles Southwest College, but now I'm part of the community. Okay. So, um, as we all know, the mission of the community college is to provide courses that feed into degree, transfer, or career options, correct? Well, when non-credit, uh, courses increase so significantly that they impact credit programs, it can prolong the academic path of the student, even minimizing their chances of transferring, graduating, and receiving financial aid. Under this president's, uh, tenure, they have been providing more resources to the non-credit areas while slashing credit offerings such as music and dance, therefore certificate, degree, and transfer opportunities. There's also been a tremendous decline in the recruitment and enrollment of African-American students. Why isn't the district and Los Angeles College not doing more direct and immediate outreach to Black high school students and the surrounding community? Um, I look forward to hearing from the President and the Chancellor and what can we do to increase not only the African-American population at Southwest College, um, but to protect Southwest College. Thank you and for your time.
Thank you very much. I think that's it for the in-person. Online, um, the person who has RED?
Hi, uh, this is Claudia Center. I'm with Disability Rights Education and Defense Fund. And I want to emphasize to the Board of Trustees that, uh, the, the protections and prohibitions of the Americans with Disabilities Act and Section 504 are foundational and very important to the disability and community, including disabled students at LACC CD. And a foundational prohibition is the prohibition on unintentional discrimination, because that is often how disability discrimination happens, not because anyone intends for somebody to be harmed, but because of how our society is built, structured, and organized. And so for us, um, it is incredibly important to protect the right to challenge unintentional disability discrimination, which the courts often call disparate impact. And so, uh, I urge the, the LA Board of Trustees to consider the disability community in making its decisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional hands, Waloop? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. That brings it into the public comment, um, oh, at the, um. Thank you. Um, again, thank you for everyone who made, uh, comments. And at the end, we'll have an opportunity to make comments on any other matter that is not on the agenda, but still related to LACC CD. So we're going to move on to reports from, from the Board. Um, Trustee Vella, um, could you please summarize the proceedings of the Budget and Finance Committee, uh, meeting that you chaired on November 17th?
Sure. Um, we actually, um, finalized the Chapter Six update and audit plan, which, um, we went ahead and gave recommendation, uh, to staff and thanked them for the audit as well. Um, we also looked at the 2021, 22 first quarter 311 Q report, um, detailing our projected ending balance of LACC CD's, uh, budget, including district, um, dollars. And I think we're in good shape and, um, went ahead and, and adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Fong, could you please summarize the proceedings of the Legislative and Public Affairs Committee that you chaired on November 17th?
Thank you so much, President Bona, and, uh, congratulations to you and, uh, leadership team of VP Vella and Second Vice President Henderson. And thank you so much to President Vedas for his leadership and efforts during these very challenging times, uh, this past year. And thank you, Trustees Hoffman and Vella, for a robust legislative and public affairs committee meeting on November 17th, 2021. I received a federal update from, uh, Leslie Poner, Paula Night. Uh, we discussed the our teams on to access these funds and grant opportunities for our district and for our students. Oh, sorry. State, State Climate Change Educational Services at West LA College and a number of our legislative priorities. Uh, thank you so much to my colleagues for robust legislative year. And, uh, we also had updates on, uh, budget parties from MGI Advocacy and Mark McDonald. The surplus of looking at 2022 is looking at the approximately $15 billion. And the Governor has indicated that he'd like to spend some of the surplus on addressing long-term, uh, retirement obligations. Also, the Assembly Budget Subcommittee on Education Finance held a hearing on the Affordable Student Housing and Campus Expansion Opportunities. So we'll be continuing to track, uh, this legislation as well. And then also the Board of Governors has allocated an additional $50 million to address student housing insecurity, as you heard from, uh, Board President. Uh, Bona has remarked on looking at student workforce housing as well, so we'll continue to track those legislative priorities. In terms of community outreach, uh, thank you so much to Ms. Villas and team for their work and efforts around two LACC CD town halls. We had town halls with Assembly Member Miguel Santiago held on November 10th. And we had a workshop held with Assembly Speaker Anthony Rendon held on November 22nd. Uh, thank you to, uh, then Board President Vedas and the Chancellor, and to everyone for their work and efforts around that workshop with the speaker. It was a great workshop. And thank you to the East LA College team, to Dr. Albert Roman, Dr. Dueñas, and team for all their leadership and efforts and having their teams answer questions and addressing the Southeast communities. Lastly, we also had an update from NAFC Communications and highlighted the LA Metro Fairness Programs, the state budget allocation for EMOSA Programs, and Affordable Housing Pilot, and the LACC CD Mastercard Partnership. So it's been a robust legislative committee. Uh, thank you so much, colleagues, again, for your leadership and efforts, and, uh, thank you so much. Thank you, President Bona.
Thank you very much. Um, Trustee Henderson, could you give, uh, the report of, of two committees, Institutional Effectiveness and Student Success Committee, along with a summary of the Black African Student Affairs Committee as well?
Definitely. Uh, thank you, President Bona. Um, for the IESS report, the committee reviewed a board policy that directs the Chancellor to develop administrative procedures necessary to protect the processing of personal data in accordance with the European Union General Data Protection Regulation, or GDPR. The GDPR is a set of rules for organizations that process personal data for individuals who are located in the European Union. The GDPR may apply to the LACC CD because the district potentially possesses the personal data of applicants, students, employees, and alumni while these individuals are in the European Union. The committee voted to endorse the policy and forward it to the full Board for approval. The committee received a presentation on the ongoing work to review and improve the student onboarding process. The work group indicated a focus on making the process more student-friendly, removing technical administrative barriers to students submitting applications, identifying and eliminating areas of possible student confusion, reducing the number of steps needed to enroll, and ensuring a also reported having less access to the internet in their home, and Black students reported that they use enough time to participate in classwork. In addition, some Asian subgroups reported less class engagement than other populations, and also a less favorable ca, campus climate. The committee requested a follow-up on the next steps and the ways in which this information will be used at the campus level to affect change. Trustees also asked for focus on the ways that we could deal with the campus environment for students who feel disconnected. Trustee Fong asked that the information be provided to the API Advisory for consideration, given some of the inequities with Asian subgroups, particularly Korean and Indian. Of the 320 report for 2020, 2021, relative day comparisons for wind and tracking of other students-centered funding formula metrics in the fall. The committee asked for information on efforts to correct the declines. The Chancellor indicated that he had emphasized the message of all hands on deck to the more than 700 attendees. The Town Hall included a summer action taking place in enrollment declines. And Trustee Bona called attention to the fact that applications were now open for fall of 2022 and asked that there be continued focus on the number of applications coming in and how many of those applications are being converted to enrollment. Um, for the African-American Advisory Committee Report, the, um, Advisory Committee met on Tuesday, December 7th. We were introduced to two of our AAOI student ambassadors and Toshi. That virtual learning is their preferred mode of instruction. They are also appreciative of the basic need support provided by their respective colleges, such as food and transportation assistance, and encourage us as a board to increase our outreach efforts in promoting available resources to students in need. Um, our AAOI Coordinator, Dr. Nyree Berry, announced that, uh, student need scholarships are ongoing and students should continue to apply. Uh, she mentioned that planning for the 2022 Black Graduation is underway, as she provided a report on the status of the Student Ambassador Program. Vice Chancellor Ryan Corner reported to the, reported on the continued decline in Black student enrollment during the fall of 2021 and provided spring and fall 2022 enrollment projections and the anticipated distribution of her funds in the coming months. Chancellor Rodriguez reported on the plan for increased funding for AAOI programs in the 2022 at purchase in organizations. Uh, Dr. Dandewu, President of, uh, Trade Tech, reminded the group of the Gold Thimble Fashion Show that was held on Friday, December 10th, in the college's beautiful new culinary art space. I had the pleasure of attending and was very impressed by the work of our student fashion designers, and reminisced on my lifelong love of hip-hop. Uh, Ms. Maria Belos, uh, announced the district's purchase of 50,000 unlimited-use TAF cards for LACC CD students. So please help us to get the word out to students in need so that they are able to take advantage. And, um, Vice Chancellor Ruben Smith reported on the facilities planning is the only African-American facility director in any community college holding the title of Vice Chancellor. The next week of Black African-American Student Affairs Advisory Committee will be the first week of February to kick off Black History Month.
expressed in the responsibilities of Personnel Commissioner. So I'll work with Mr. Delahoussaye to ensure that the, uh, the characteristics, qualities, service, uh, elements and the, uh, the qualifications are indeed, uh, posted. There'll be an open call with the final date and then uh posted. There will be an open call with the final date and then co- applications will be collected. The process will ensue by which members of the board, a small group of the board, will review and then nominate to the entire board of the successful candidate.
Uh, thank you. Is there any other board member that would like to make a comment?
I, I do. Um, I just wanna kind of remind everyone about um us, you know, looking into various uh mechanisms of outreach in order to include a more diverse and uh, you know, um personnel board in the future. Uh, not that it hasn't been, but I do believe that if we were to go to some of the outlets that we could voice um this type of, you know, uh, position.
Yes, I don't definitely understand the comments too far. I have to remember that you, well, we always had a process.
Trusty Vella?
Yes.
Trusty Veres. Can we get a quick explanation as to um?
Yes, happy to do so. This is a replacement building. The name's carrying over from an old building to a new building. So, no new name. It's carrying over.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? No? Seeing none. Wa Lupa?
Didn't you see Martinez's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trusty Buena?
Yes.
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 Trusty Veres.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next item. May I have a motion and?
I, I move to approve uh our
Yes.
Moreno?
Oh, sorry.
Tila?
Yeah.
Veres?
Yeah.
And we want to start this to everyone. How about three parts? Day one is I will give some specific for December twenty twenty-one. I will ask our KPMG to come up for the annual performance audit presentation on the second and then just the receipt and follow-up, a program performance audit for the fiscal year that in June, there it is. So those are the three elements of the uh chancellor report today. So let me start off by commending to, to the board of the report that was sent to you all today and to the public, the uh posted report that highlights our status of COVID nineteen, what we're doing about that. Provided through the foundation, the district foundation, and so news events when I saw them. Enrollment Summit District-wide, it will be the first week of February. Uh, as we right preceding the spring twenty-two semester, and I'm happy to report that the vast majority of colleges that uh at LACC D will have a substantial number of on-ground classes beginning of spring of twenty-two, again, that will provide not just the classes in person, but the commensurate support services uh that are around them. Uh, the reality is that while students are preferring to be brought to the online brought this over the line. This is the nation's largest fairness public transit program, largest, and I'm pretty proud of that. I hope you are too. Uh, so I want to thank trustee uh Veres for being there, uh, the uh LACC President Mary Gallagher for hosting us. Thank you, Mary, for, it was such a wonderful event right in front of the station there. Our student trustee, Cora Martinez, who really was the star of the show. Uh, if you haven't seen her, she is excellent and she will give you English. Uh, and did very, very well. Uh, and also to uh, to LA Metro CEO Stephanie Wiggins, she's such a great, uh, great partner. Uh, was, was uh in more than forty print and online news outlets and fifty broadcast ki- broadcast clips. Think about that for a moment in terms of exposure uh and whatnot. So I wanted to point out the uh who organized all of that, think about Maria, the excellent words there. And, and LA Metro press staff and our, our colleagues in Mosaic Communication. So that's how we work a story. That's for the benefit of students and I, and I'm very proud of the work uh that was done in that space. So, so thank you, members of the board of trustees. So that's uh concludes my report for uh, for uh the chancellor report. But I commend uh your um, your reading. Uh, our communications team does an excellent job in putting this newsletter together. It really does speak to uh the, uh, the, the work of the district during this time. For this fall, in terms of just some statistics, we will be hiring sixty-five full-time tenure-driven faculty. We will produce three to four hundred million dollars of construction work, all nine emphasis. Uh, we will be adding additional sections, both online and on-ground, and we will be completing the, the permanent presidents.
to kind of know that that are coming and or or issues that you believe or you're requesting that the Chancellor, so that people can look forward to those, you know, to those agenda items to be addressed. I I do have one, however, the chair goes last. So I'm going to start with trustee Moreno. You heard the report from the Chancellor. Is there is there anything that you would like the Chancellor in January to address that that you would like more reports? Again, this isn't a, this isn't a, you know, we're not doing a chance evaluation here in public, but we're just saying, please, what if there's an item that you would prefer more information or additional or new information from?
Yeah, well, just I just want to maybe get some clarity to this. You know, originally, when we sought some bus passes, it was to facilitate travel to our campuses. It's kind of bizarre that now we're touting this bus pass and yet we're still conducting majority of our classes off campus or online. So it seems somewhat contradictory that we would want to take great pride in having bus passes, but when there's no virtually few classes being off in our campuses, a little bit bizarre. But mind you, that was the original motivation in having the bus passes. Now, what's a little troubling to me is we're talking about growth. I believe you mentioned sixty five full time faculty, but I I would assume from all the data I'm seeing, and you trust seeing the same data in terms of our enrollments, that shouldn't we be planning on on having our staff catch up to the relative size of our student population? That would be a time for us now to plan. And I'm not so certain in light of what looks like even those most recent data with regard to the winter session, that the average class size is about as low as it possibly yet. We've actually offered more sections and have fewer bodies and fewer students taking classes. So the the there is going to be a point in time where we will not be able to afford this. And I'm really worried about creating a larger liability when we may have to correct that in the near future. So perhaps your planning might incorporate before you engage in hiring vast numbers of people. Yes. I'm sorry.
I'm not sure if he did he pop off or?
Did you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I don't know what part of did you, I don't know what part of what I said you didn't hear. But anyways, just to reiterate, I think that any any planning for increased staff and faculty should incorporate our current projections with regard to enrollment, our reality that we face today. And perhaps we'd want to begin and prepare for the eventuality. Are you still, can you still hear me?
We can hear you, trustee Moreno. I have a question because the 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 direction I asked the board was, would you like the Chancellor to address that at the January Chancellor's report?
Oh, yes, of course.
Okay, all right, okay, yeah. Trustee Hoffman?
Thank you, Chancellor. No questions, but thank you for your report.
Okay, trustee Fong?
Thank you so much, President Bueno, for the robust report. And great to see a lot of good feedback on the transit passes and everything that's happening forward on our legislative priorities. So we'll keep pushing hard. And then in terms of the enrollment, thanks for those updates. I know we're at a very critical stage in terms of our enrollment, so anything that we continue to do to push, to market, to advertise our programs and is a is something that I appreciate all the hard work and efforts of everyone here, all the board members, the colleagues, Chancellor, and every all the presidents here, so and the staff at the rest of the school. So as we continue to amplify the importance of enrollment in our winter and spring and summer, let's continue to push. Thank you so much, President.
Um, trustee, if I can reserve the opportunity to speak to the Chancellor later if things come up that I didn't think about now on the spot.
Okay.
But I did want to see if we can have a prepared presentation on, I know there's been mention about vacancies inside of our human resources department. So if that's one thing that we can get presented to our board, where does that stand? What we need to fill? I know we also had just a recent departure also in that department. So it would be helpful to understand what exactly is going on and in in connection and consideration of our the restructuring efforts, like where it stands, where it's going, what's happening. So, thank you.
Trustee Henderson?
I have no questions. I just wanted to thank the Chancellor for the report and thank you for your diligence and listening to the trustees and moving forward on the issues and items that we are attempting to prioritize.
Trustee Vella?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment on, I do want us to continue to have a very robust and strong relationship with Metro. I think that it's about time that, you know, we have put our local advocates to to work to create that relationship. Obviously, I want to thank Maria and the Chancellor, Maria Velos, for spearheading that. I know the communication started under my leadership as as president of the of the Legislative Committee as Chair of it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to part B. And the next two items, they're simply presentations, no action is necessary. I'd like to, and these are virtual presentations, so we'll be looking at our screens here.
Great. Okay, several of you know me, my name is Erica Alboard, I'm a managing director. Construction projects are covered by Proposition A, Proposition Double A, Measure J, and the Measure C bond proceeds. And just as a reminder, a performance audit, financial audit, we really look at key efficiency and we'll look at effectiveness. And we're really trying to do an analysis for management and those in charge of governments in terms of, are there any areas where everyone can perform? Are there any inefficiencies? Are there any opportunities to reduce costs or facilitate decision making to 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 move along things a little bit smoother, if you will, in the processes? And also to contribute to the public accountability. What we don't do is look at the internal control structure of Build LACC D or LACC D. And each year, each performance audit year, we look at different areas of the bond program. And this year, and we agreed on four key areas. Project closeout, which is an area we've looked at in the past. And in prior years, a lot of the closeout processes were lagging behind for various reasons, and we wanted to come back to that this year. We also looked at procurement management, and specifically, we looked at procurement surrounding furniture fixtures and equipment. And this is an area of procurement we have not looked at in the past. So we wanted to take a little bit of a fresh look and and look somewhere where we haven't audited before. We also looked at payment processing and really specifically, we assessed compliance with the standard operating procedures, and that's soup to nuts when an invoice comes in and how you're accepting work and how you are paying for these services. And lastly, we'll look at two areas, quality control and inspection, and that's really relates to quality of workmanship, the materials that are procured for the construction projects. Or leading practices. Or SOPs that are in place by Build LACC D and the PMO are what we would consider. They are very well thought out. They are in compliance with the law, the state, and proper. As a result of that, we really conduct our audit to make sure that things are in compliance with these SOPs. And we do have some good news this year. We only had one observation, and at that, it was a low priority. We considered a low priority audit observation. As you also may recall, we do have our observations sorted, if you will, or tiered into low, high, and medium priority audit observations. And in prior years, we've had anything from low, frankly, all the way to high observations. And that's really good news. I don't think we've ever reported on just one audit observation in the past. And in addition to that, we also did not identify any significant internal control deficiencies within the context of our audit. We did not identify any. Language were to the invoice payment date requirements based on what a compliant invoice is in certain areas. There were some just updating to the language surrounding retention scope and guidance. We also had some flow chart that related to the injuries or non significant injuries or incident, again, in the EHNS area of our audit. And then lastly, we have some spreadsheet that's used for the closeout steps and closeout procedures in the closeout area. So that's really all that we have to report this year. And as always, just wanted to commend Dr. Smith and the PMO for being very forthcoming and very easy to work with during this audit. We really have a very great relationship here. And I think with without getting all this documentation, again, also in COVID, we've been working remotely. It's been it's been really good to come to this conclusion and have a successful performance audit presentation here today. Have any questions?
Thank you. Trustee Moreno, any comments?
No, I have no questions or comments.
Trustee Henderson?
No questions.
Trustee Henry, I mean, Hoffman?
No questions, but I would look forward to it. So thank you so much.
Trustee Fong?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Trustee Vettis?
I have no questions and my opinion is, can you, it's the second year of of.
The report is is nice and concise. And I think if if anything material had come up, at this point, you would have an obligation to report it, correct?
Absolutely. If there's anything that, and we use the term significant in a performance audit, which is sort of the same thing as materially, you might have heard in financial audits, so absolutely we would have to to report it. And we are, if the proof proves this report, it will be issued with today's date. So yes, you have an obligation obviously to bring anything to your attention that might have come up from the last field of work to today.
Dr. Bueno, I misspoke earlier. The next item does, now that you've received the presentation and had the opportunity to ask questions, there is a motion that is needed in a second to accept the receipt of the performance audit report.
Is there a motion to receive the 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 audit report from the board? So move.
I'll second.
Trustee Fong, and seconded by trustee Hoffman. Any additional comments? Seeing or hearing none? Well, Luba?
Student trustee Martinez advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Fong?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Okay, now to the bulky item. So board members, we now have for our review the combined consent calendar for items L one through Y seven. These items include consent calendars for human resources, personnel commission, academic affairs, student affairs, and student services, budget and finance, business and facilities. Are there any items which require additional information? Please state the, if if so, please state the item number on the agenda item where we may find it. So board members, I'm gonna start off with trustee Hoffman.
You didn't mention the the Z business items, they're not part of consent? Okay, I have a question on Z, so when we get to that, thank you.
Okay, just to clarify, nothing, nothing, okay. Trustee Fong?
No questions, thank you.
Trustee Vettis?
None on the consent.
Trustee Henderson?
No questions.
Trustee Vella?
No items.
Trustee Moreno?
No, no items.
Motion to approve? Yes, motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Vettis, second by Vella. Guadalupe?
Student trustee Martinez advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Fong?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
May I have a motion and a second to adopt all of the remaining items of the consent, of the combined consent calendars of L1 through Y8? So move. Trustee Vella?
Trustee Vella, we already did that. Yeah, it was done. Thank you.
We're, we're moving on, we're moving on. Nothing occurred, nothing to see. One second. Board members, we now, we will now review the business items Z1 through Z8. Are there any items which require, any items which require additional information? Please state the item number on the agenda where we may find it. Let me start off with trustee Hoffman.
Yes, item Z1.
Z1. Is there any other item? Trustee Hoffman?
Oh, for me?
Yeah.
Um, no.
Trustee Fong?
No questions. Thank you.
Trustee Vettis?
Can, I'm sorry, can we scroll to six and seven?
No, let's, let's, let's identify them, then go back.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Vettis? No, okay. Trustee Henderson?
No questions.
Trustee Vella?
No questions.
Trustee Moreno?
No, no questions.
Yeah, so let's go back to, to Z1.
Thank you, President Wellner. So I know that there were 14 colleges chosen during a pilot project for student housing. And I see Dr. Wan walking up to the podium right now. Thank you. And I have been asking about this. I haven't asked publicly. Because I sit on a statewide task force, mostly made up of your colleagues, CEOs and chancellors. I'm one of two trustees. And we talk a lot about student housing and creative programs to, you know, provide housing for students. I know the grant was $700,000. I don't know if it was $700,000 a year for three years, or if it's $700,000 altogether. And I'm just wondering what the plan is. Because it looks like, I, I know you were partnering with some other organization before. And I'm really not, I feel like this is a lot of money and I don't know how restrictive it is. I feel like we could actually use the money to actually provide housing for students. So I'm wondering what this partnership is all about and how many students have we housed? And I'd like some kind of a report. If you just have an overview today, that would be great, but I would like a more in-depth report as well.
Dr. Wan, if you can identify yourself also before, before you address the board.
Thank you. Saharwan has it in for Lefton for Southwest College. Thank you for the question.
Can you move a little closer to the mic?
Sure, sorry. Can you hear me?
Kind of.
Okay, apologies for that. So in regards to your questions about how many students are served through this partnership, the partnership, this partnership and this board agenda item can cover 40 students total in total housing. But the remainder of the fund is used for rapid rehousing, direct support to students, personnel. There's a lot of costs associated with this, this type of rapid rehousing that we're just not equipped to do at a community college level, which is why we trust a community partner like Hoviness, who has an established relationship with many community colleges like Suidos and has been doing this work for many years. So the partnership itself will cover 40 students for complete housing. The rest of the funding, if you'd like, I can break that down if you, if you're curious.
I know what I would be curious is to know are, you know, I, I would like to see the student, like, who are the students? Are, are they housed for the whole time that they're at LA Southwest? Where are they living? Those, that's what I would like to see. Because I do know there are some colleges that actually have partnered with the community and, you know, work with landlords and actually place students in apartments. So that's the kind of information I'd be looking for. Like, I want to know, if, if we've placed 40 students, I think that's fantastic and we should be highlighting that. And I'd like to take back to my committee, who's always looking for success stories as well.
Wonderful. I, I can absolutely provide that after this meeting.
Okay, so if we, and if we approve this today, so, so the other 200,000 has already been spent?
So the 200,000, some of it is for our colleges' costs, right? We have two coordinators who oversee the program. We have funding for laptops, hotspots, gift cards for some of our, our, you know, students who are in immediate need, in emergency need. And then the rest of that funding is part of this. So it is 750,000 every year for the next three years.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're spending it smart, that we're not using it just for staff, but it's actually going straight to students and funding their housing while they're at our colleges.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. colleagues, do you have any other questions for Dr. Wan?
I don't have any questions or comments. If you could follow up with the
Thank you.
Just, just a question. And this is, I was trying to clarify with the chancellor, because For Dr. Wan? Perhaps, and perhaps maybe for the chancellor. I think we have Hoviness ink on two parts of our agenda. And I know that there's several nonprofit agencies that we do and we do work with. From the standpoint of just sort of understanding all the levels of relationship, is there, is there a way to get a report back from the chancellor of all the layers? Because I think, you know, here we're dealing with housing, but in other places, we could be dealing with something else. And that's okay. I don't have a problem with it. But like sometimes, just from the standpoint of, like, when we aggregate total contracts and there are various institutions, it's, it's sometimes helpful in the approval process to not have my wires crossed to know that this is one area. The other items are another area. And of course, groups like Hoviness can also work at other colleges as well. So, but from the standpoint of the way our agendas are put together, we never sort of acknowledge other business that the groups are engaged with as opposed to perhaps some of our contracts in other places, they note previous awards. They know previous ongoing. I think it would be helpful for, for the standpoint here.
The board that lasts a month, you approve five providers with this kind of service, including Hoviness. So we will be exercising a use of those providers to provide immediate support to the students and whatnot. But this is a specific contract, specific college, specific set of services. That's why you see the item.
And I, and I say that because we also have approved contracts with this group for other things beyond. That's, that's, that's all I just wanted to save the confusion and lack of clarity in my mind. Okay. Seeing no questions?
Thank you.
Need a motion and a second?
Yes. No, we, we already motioned.
Student trustee Martinez advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Fong?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Yes. Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Thank you. So board members, we will now review the facilities items AA1 through AA8. Are there any items which require additional information? Please state the item number on the agenda where we may find it. By the way, as you can tell, I'm absolutely not linear. So I, this time I'll start off with trustee Henderson.
No items.
Trustee Vella?
No items.
Trustee Moreno?
No items.
Trustee Vettis? I, I have no items, but if I can make a request, since, since we're in a different setting than we've been the last few months, if we, if we have one through eight, if we can just scroll up and down, so we can take a quick look. But I don't have any items here. Okay, so it's a, I think that's a Crystal issue, right, Crystal? All right, Crystal's on it. All right. Trustee Fong?
No items. Thank you.
Trustee Hoffman?
No items. Thank you.
All right. May I have a second and, oh, actually, we haven't had a motion. Oh, yeah, may I have a motion and a second to, to adopt all of the remaining facility items AAA, AA1 through AA8? Trustee Vettis, second?
Second.
So that's, trustee Henderson, beat you to it. Okay. Seeing no additional comments, since we already addressed them. Roll call, Guadalupe?
Student trustee Martinez advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Fong?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Okay. Now we're on to BB, human resources items, BB1 through BB2. May I have a motion and a second on items BB1? Can we take both items since they're, I'd like to make a motion for items one and two?
I'll second, I'll second that motion.
Is, is there, is there any, I was gonna say desertion, dissent? Or opposition? Objection? I'm in court. Objection? Which world am I in? All right, no opposition. Two, so we'll take a combined. So I need a motion on, let me give, let me get, let me get that motion again for BB1 and BB2 then. Make a motion for the approval of items BB1 and BB2. Okay. And I think trustee Hoffman, you second that?
Yes.
Okay. Seeing no additional comment. Guadalupe?
Student trustee Martinez advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Fong?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Moreno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
We will now be moving to recommendations from the chancellor. We'll be taking each, each item individually. Before
Mr. Pardon me, the president. Well, I did read the item into the record, the correction for item CC1. So I, I have indeed, the item is ready for action.
Okay. President Yes. Can I make a request? Because I, I do understand that the item also was heard in the personnel commission and had some concerns from the offer. Would it be prudent for us to have a presentation from Personnel Commission Director as to why they arrived at this step as opposed to others? I believe so. I think so, yes. Trustee Hoffman, you had a concern as well?
I did, and I wasn't sure if we needed to have a, a motion and a second before we had discussion or if you wanted to have a, I'm open to have a presentation by the Personnel Commission if that's what was part of your plan today. But I do have some comments that I'd like to make. I mean, I do have a discussion around this item.
Chancellor, you have some thoughts?
Well, we were not, we can make some general comments. The reading in process that the Personnel Commission currently is under is what led to the recommendation. So that's the, the short of it. So I don't know if you want to make comments beyond that.
I, I, I think there, there's, there's a, I think what I'm getting, we don't have a, a motion yet. Let's go to the motion. Let's go to the motion. Can I get a motion, then we can discuss it?
I want to ask General Counsel, do we need to have a motion and a second before we can have discussion? Or can we have a discussion first? What?
Yeah.
And I did so at the beginning of the meeting, sir.
Okay, so you need to first read the item and then
No, I did that already, to the very, the very beginning.
Earlier. Okay.
But if I could have another moment here. This is to act on the specific item as presented in the record. If it's a discussion on the Personnel Commission policies, that's not agendized.
It's not a discussion of policies.
And we could have agendized for a future meeting. So that's, I just wanted, just, I don't know what the comments are gonna be about.
The first thing we have to do is get this, get, get the motion in. Okay, well, I'll offer a motion for the purposes of discussion. I'm not, I'm not sure I'm prepared to support the item, but I'm, I'll offer the motion. No, no, I, 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 it's like going to the court. You may lose, but you know, get in there. So trustee Vettis, motion, second by trustee Vella. Now we're gonna move on to discussion. So to be fair, trustee Vettis brought it up first, so let's I, I think I wanted to raise it from the perspective. I, I know we've, over the past several years, have been dealing with a, a reading in salary equity standpoint. We've dealt with this at multiple levels. The states made some changes. I think the, the, the one sort of concern, and I, and I raised, actually, I don't think I see him in the audience now, but the, the one concern I had is the consistency of policy in the, that's in the commission's rules as to what this board and this, as an institution as a whole, has been discussing and moving in a direction in, to be consistent with state law and what's been discussed there. And I know it's a lot of moving parts, but I just want to understand that do we have, is there potentially a discrepancy? This, is there something that we should be asking the commission to update? Or, or what? And so, you know, like I said, I don't have all pieces of information, but I've got a chance to view at least some of the Personnel Commission agendas that discussed the item. And wasn't, you know, party to it in the room or hearing or listening, but I just saw it as agendized. And, and that's the, the core where my comments are coming from. So I, I, I just want to make sure that kind of for everyone who's hearing, we're, we're not, the, the discussion is not, not at all about the individual. It is about the structure of, of the, of, of the, of what we're being asked to approve. And one is not connected to the other. Thank you, thank you, trustee. I just, I do want to say, we actually have made our offer to our, 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 our candidate for, for director. And, and this is the process of, the process, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Vice Chancellor, this is the process of how her salary gets established, her step gets established. And, and I'm just, I want to sort of understand the rulemaking and if we're consistent with where the board has come and where the Personnel Commission is at, or is there a need to have a dialogue about rules? Okay, all right. Thank you for that. Okay. I didn't mean to come off as, as opposed to the person. No, it's just, you know, when we, when we have an official name on here, we have to make sure that, 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 that it, it has, that, that that person understands and the entire ecological system of our, of our system understands that it's only a question about the structure, not related at all in any kind of way on this planet or universe of that individual that which we have a high opinion of. Thank you. Okay. Trustee Hoffman?
Thank you. And I, I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, but I actually kind of feel like it has everything to do with the person who was offered the position. So
Okay.
First of all, congratulations, Dr. Gutierrez. You have been an amazing Vice Chancellor of Human Resources. I think the board really absolutely appreciates the work that you do. And we absolutely want to have you here for a very long time. And I think I speak for, I think I can confidently speak for everybody when I say that. That being said, I think the issue here is that Dr. Gutierrez was ultimately offered step one of the pay scale. Although Chancellor, I believe the recommendation was to start Dr. Gutierrez on step three of the pay scale. Now, because of an arcane Personnel Commission rule, that became impossible. And I think that's kind of what we're grappling with here. We were told that had Dr. Gutierrez come in from the outside, she could be rated in anywhere on that pay scale, from one to five. But because she was considered a promotional internal candidate, she could not be put on anything beyond step one. That's complicated, number one, because she did come from the outside. She is not a long-term employee with LACC D. And we were very, very happy to have her. And Dr. Roman, who served in that position at a much higher step, had Dr. Gutierrez as his right-hand person for two years. Dr. Gutierrez is by herself stepping into a brand-new role. And this, to me, smacks as unfair and against all of what we stand for in terms of equal pay. And we've passed two or three resolutions on equal pay. I sit on the Women's Caucus of the California Community Colleges. As a matter of fact, I'm gonna be voted in as caucus chair. And the number one issue that we're dealing with, we're dealing with two. One, on the student side and student parents. But the, the other issue we're dealing with, and it's a big issue in the community college system, is equal pay. And Dr. Gutierrez is a woman, a woman of color, and she's put on step one. She stepped into this job beautifully. There was no lack of service. She has gracefully handled the crazy vaccination requirement process. And she's handled six bargaining units. Maybe one of them was already done in terms of collecting bargaining agreements. And she hasn't missed a beat. And this, to me, is And this, to me, is unfair. This, to me, is discrimination. And one of our first guest speakers for the Women's Caucus was Lily Ledbetter, who fought the Goodyear Tire Company. Actually, she lost in the Supreme Court, and then that was overturned thanks to Ruth Bader Ginsburg. And a law was created, the Lily Ledbetter Equal Pay Act. And this is discrimination, and that's how I feel. And I'm not prepared to, I'm not prepared to approve this today. I think we need to go back to the drawing board and we need to figure something out. All of this, the reason why she's even on the side of the, with the Personnel Commission is because the classification, when Dr. Roman left the position, was changed from being an academic vice chancellor to a classified vice chancellor. We brought in two new vice chancellors on, by the way, a higher salary schedule from the outside, and they were rated in at step three and step five. So it can be done, folks. So I'm not prepared to approve this today. I desperately, desperately want to make sure that Dr. Gutierrez is part of our service for a very long time. But I really think we're LACC D, and we can do better. So thank you.
I, I have a series of questions for general counsel, but before I do that, I want to make sure that trustee Fong, Fong, yeah, any, 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 any comment? Then I'm gonna go to trustee, then I'm gonna go down the line. Then I have a series of questions. And I think you, I'm just giving you forewarning. I think you know what I may be asking, but you know, I'm gonna ask.
Thank you so much, Chair Bona. Thank you to my colleague, trustee Hoffman, who really eloquently laid out a strong argument and foundation in terms of this particular position. And I too admire the work of Dr. Gutierrez, and she's been somebody who's been engaged, hands-on, negotiated throughout this pandemic, the human resources angles and working with all the different constituency groups. And I think she's done a solid job throughout this very challenging times. So the comments made by my colleague, trustee Hoffman, I agree with. And I, I think we should look at how we can address the issues in terms of the pay rating and then looking at it from a policy perspective. I, if somebody's coming in quote-unquote from outside versus internal, I think when we look at trying to support and to promote from within, folks that are from within the organization, quote-unquote, should not be hindered in terms of pay scale if they're not allowed to be coming at a different step. So this is something that, on the larger policy area, that we need to do with deeper dive on. And it's something that we can, this is at the Personnel Commission or how we can continue to set those policies. This is something that I think a conversation, we need to have a larger conversation on. So thank you, Mr. President.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes, the only, it's a question for legal counsel is if, if we do not approve this item and we approve something later down the road. Is there, how, how do we deal with like retro salary? Because we've extended the offer. And there is a difference between current salary and, and what's being proposed here. But is it established from the date that we made the offer?
It is. If I may jump in, because the way the item is written and the way the Personnel Commission rules work is, it's backdated to July 1st. So six months later, which is January 1st, she would be at step two.
Okay. But from the standpoint of?
It could be backdated, yes.
If it's not approved, yeah, we could, we could consider backdate or retro. Okay, thank you.
There are other Personnel Commission rules that require an applicant to take a position within a certain period. I'm worried that not approving it may cause issues with the. So I recommend that you approve the appointment and then deal with the salary issue going forward. There are issues with the rating in process. I've been here for 16 years. We've heard that argument where people, internal candidates are viewed as a promotion and start at step one, while external candidates view them rating in and are placed based on their outside salary. That creates a disadvantage for internal candidates. One way to resolve that problem, particularly at the vice chancellor level, is just have one salary. Get rid of skip. If I'll give all of them one salary, if you want to make that salary step five for everybody, that gets rid of any kind of discrepancy or disadvantage to internal candidates. But at this point, particularly since this has opened so long, I would recommend that you approve it tonight to deal with the salary issue.
Since, let me, let me just address some, I was hoping to, okay. So general counsel, if, and, and for those paying attention, you know, I don't mean this in any negative way at all, right? So when something starts off like that, right? Okay, you're general counsel for the commission and the board, correct?
Items with respect to the personnel.
Okay. So this, this position, could, could you lead us how this position then gets to us? Why we need to, why we need to approve? Some of us may know that, but it's important for everyone to understand. Then the, the question is, can the personnel, one, can the Personnel Commission waive any issue time? Two, can they work through a workaround? I mean, they, because you're not, you're not their counsel, so that's a Personnel Commission. Can they do a workaround knowing that, that you have this issue going, going on? And, and I mentioned again, whether, to make sure that everyone knows that you're our counsel on this matter.
The issue with the timing has to do more with the rights of others who may be on them. So if, for example, the Personnel Commission rule that says that the person who's offered the job has to accept the job within two weeks, and if they don't, then we go to the next person on the list, that time period has passed. And so now we're, we're infringing upon potential rights of other people. And that's where our problem.
And, and, and I'm understanding that. But sometimes institutions set up, set up default structures. Then, then we're all afraid of hitting those default structures. But unless they're challenged, they'll never be dealt with. You know, so, you know, so if we did not approve, and you know, I'm not sure that there are four votes, four votes, we, we, we ultimately, I think, are, are saying, how are we challenging that? And what is the response from the Personnel Commission? You know, for that protecting this employee that we want to stay?
That will have to do with future negotiations between Personnel Commission. Now, of course, your first question was why does this matter come to you?
Yeah.
All district employees are hired by the board, even people protected by the merit system are still hired by the board. That's why the hiring decision comes.
The, the, the interesting thing, I think the conundrum that we're seeing is that we ultimately are, 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 you know, need to approve it. But the systems under which it, they're, they're, it's coming to us, we don't have that control. So to, to a certain extent, I think we're being asked to vote something that conflicts against some of our values. And, and that's the problem I think some of us are, are, are having in the, in this, in the, in this process. But I'm gonna move to my colleagues, Vella, Henderson, and Moreno, then back to, then back to, to Jha. I think we're gonna need you a little more, by the way.
I, I think for me, it's just a matter of understanding. You know, the vice chancellor, it's, it's a vice chancellor of HR for the district, correct? It's not just for classified employees, correct? So would it be possible for the board to remove her position from the authority of the Personnel Commission since she handles non-classified?
Well, as you know, the vice chancellor and the director of HR position, these were the directors, were considered academic positions. All about maybe, I'm frank, the issue at, at San Francisco College, where they had certain positions, the, the HR position being one of them, the legal counsel and so forth, listed as academic positions. Counselors determined that those positions listed as academic, their compensation was not creditable service for the purpose of counselors. Counselors kicked all of them, body counselors gave a check, and it caused a catastrophe. Counselors also and counselors issued a directive to the colleges to let them know that certain positions cannot be designated as academic or positions above one. That's why the position from the academic side to the classified side, where it should be to avoid problems with the time.
Okay, but I guess then, why do we have someone that is approved by the Personnel Commission that's overseeing non-merit employees? Because obviously, people who are not classified, like, let's say, faculty administrator, she's over all of us. I mean, including, you know, she's not just over employees that participate in the merit system. She's over everybody. So I don't understand how that has to do with academics, where in reality, what I'm trying to say is that could there be a hybrid mechanism where, where she's funded so that the district also has control over what she's paid, not just the Personnel Commission? Or the rules, that she doesn't just adhere to Personnel Commission rules? Because I don't understand why we're, why the fate of, I understand why it's, why it had to be done. But I also don't understand why, then at that point, you know, she's over, you know, the rest of us that are not part of the merit system since the Personnel Commission and it, its whole purpose is, is for the merit system and the employees that participate in the merit system.
HR director controls the hiring side and the personnel and HR side of all of the employees, including the academic. She's not controlling an academic program or activity, not the supervisor of academics. And managing all of the classified, both classified and certificated, non-classified HR function. I don't think that there's a, have to be an academic employee. Issue with trying to separate it and creating a job, an HR job, that's designated as academic, it brings a return to the cheap economy. Counselors are already prohibited, counselors as well. Counselors will not allow creditable compensation for classified employees who are serving in academia.
Okay. I mean, I'm not satisfied, but. Okay. Trustee Henderson?
I, I just want to ditto echo what trustee Hoffman mentioned regarding equity. And I hope that we will consider going back and revisiting this and having more discussion on this item before we vote.
Before we vote. Okay.
I didn't hear what you said. I can't, what did you say? I said I echo what you stated. And I hope that we will consider as a board to go back and, you know, take this item and have some more discussion on it.
Our, trustee Moreno, before our comment, or actually, back to trustee Hoffman.
Yes. You know, I couldn't agree with more with the, the problem that we're confronting here in terms of internal candidates versus outside. I know over the many years outsiders have the flexibility of identifying salary that otherwise we would not recognize internally. It's always been a problem. It continues to be a problem. However, I think you may be, you need to be careful here because the rule is to be put in place in order for it to be blind. It would apply to whatever ethnic, racial, gender, it would be blind. It would be just equal to everyone, and that's an important point. Question arises as to whether or not we would want to change that rule. Now, mind, once we go about making a modification, whether bound or interaction, we kind of set a precedent. And a precedent would apply to anyone subsequently. This can be very chaotic after a while. I imagine the commission looked at all the data following their rules and had the person enter. Now, we could have identified at the beginning of the process at a higher entry level, which could have been identified earlier in terms of recruitment efforts. But since that was not the case, I imagine the commission, without knowing all the details, it followed its rules relative to entry at the first level. Mind you, here's, let me apply another example. You know, if this person weren't working directly for us, let's say person was a custodian or a clerk, well, the individual would have to be assigned according to the rules. First step, you know, after the six months, second step, so forth. I mean, the fact the individual dealt with us directly should not give them added benefits that otherwise would be limiting in terms of our own other staff members. So we have to be careful when we go about modifying the rules because the rules then become precedent, then we may have a whole chaotic situation thereafter. I understand the frustration. I have been in 50 years, as I said, and I am, at one time, have been submitted to or subjected to the bias for, from an insider versus an outsider. I've always had a trouble with that. However, perhaps maybe there's another way of handling it. But I don't think we should go about modifying our rules. And clearly, the academic side versus classified, I've always maintained that we should make them academic, but that's a lost cause given the STRS approach. Because it is true, we have more of much flexibility if it's an academic. However, but I do think we ought to be cautious in terms of how we go about making a modification to the rules because I would assume we should be able to apply that across the board, should we decide to do that here. And I believe that the commission's responsibility is to be that, that, that blind, basically, rule that applies to everyone uniformly, not given special preference to others. That's the caution I make here. And I think at the end of the day, it probably is better, better to follow the rule than somehow create another rule that might be detrimental to our policies. Thank you.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yeah. Thank you, trustee Moreno. I actually agree with much of what you said based on the way the rules are. But the fact of the matter is that it's not been past practice. And so to now, all of a sudden, decide, oh, we're gonna follow this rule for this one employee, it's, it's, it's counterintuitive to me. If you look at the job description, the duties and responsibilities, they are infinitely much greater than the job that Dr. Gutierrez is coming from. And yes, they were both originally part of the academic service, and they were both STIRS creditable jobs. And what I found out in the process is somebody disenrolled Dr. Gutierrez from STIRS and didn't even put her in PERS. So she's sort of in this like limbo area. So we've really done just a disservice to somebody who's working hard and, and really doing great for all of us and for our district. And I would like to take this, get, push this back, postpone this vote today if we could, send it back to the Personnel Commission. This is basically, this is not just a regular position, high-level position within the Personnel Commission. This is practically the number three position in our entire district. We have a chancellor, we have a deputy chancellor, and your next person in charge is your vice chancellor of human resources. She literally deals with every single one of us and every single piece of human resources and all of our issues within the district. The hiring, the verification, the TB, the, all of it. And collective bargaining. This is a very, very high-level position. This isn't just a random position that if you, if you change the rule or modify the rule this time, it's gonna apply to everybody. And maybe we have to pull out our senior-level executives from the Personnel Commission. And look, I agree that someone, if you have a five-step process, people should come in and step. Fact of the matter is that hasn't been past practice here. And suddenly now it's gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, all of a sudden, get strict and implement this when we've got a vice chancellor of human resources, who, by the way, they're very hard to find. And so I know we created a special pay scale for our facilities director and our IT director, both vice chancellors. I would argue that human resources belongs on that, that pay scale because it's not easy to find a vice chancellor or vice president of human resources. And I don't know, Dr. Roman, if you want to add anything to the conversation? But I really think we need to go back to the drawing board. Yes, there are probably other creative things that we can do, but we need to send a message. And Dr. Gutierrez has been in the job for over a year. And so why can't that go toward placing her on a higher step? That might be just the easiest thing to do, is give her the credit for the year that she's been doing the job as the interim. I don't know how we want to handle it here.
Right. Before, before we open up to everyone, I just want to make sure we're, there's a board meeting. So it's, can't we, as counsel, Dr. Roman, nothing against Dr. Roman, but let's keep it up here. Did you have a specific HR question or?
So that you have the flexibility to employ somebody for an extended period of time, but you'd employ them at the first step. And then subsequently, they would be employed at another step. It seems to me that's more reasonable than uh than trying to change other kinds of policies. Uh I was wondering, does the commission representative there, is there somebody there that could speak on behalf of the commission?
And you know. Can I say one more thing? You triggered something, um trustee Moreno. The salary of the first step or use the pay scale, the newly created pay scale for the facilities director and the IT director, put her on that scale.
I'll tell you very candidly, this is the, the everyone starts comparing themselves to it. You know, one time we didn't have the higher level pay for facilities and others. So whenever that was done, then that opens the door for a variety of others. I have to compare though, one of the most important jobs.
Those Do you want to You know. The I, I think what here is forward with if we we want to make sure that we still have it is Uh.